Okay, I want to call this meeting to order. So I'll call this meeting to order. It's now 6:01 PM. So we're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance first.
The ladies and gentlemen, in the United States of America, to salute the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this evening, Lord, just thanking you for the rain that you provided. We ask that if it is in your will, Lord, that you provide us with some much more needed rain. Lord, we thank you for all the faces that are represented here, Lord. We ask that you just, your peace be amongst us, Lord, and the decisions that are made tonight, Lord, and the items that are talked about. Lord, we just ask that you be with us through this whole thing, Lord, and we thank you for all this you do. In your continued blessings. In your name I pray. Amen.
We're going to move to item number two. We're going to establish that we've got to form all the board members are present. So we're going to move to item number four now, which is the presentation of scholarships. Janell, tell us a little bit about the scholarships before I present them.
Okay, we had seven applied scholarships in Mount French from $4,000 to $1,000. Unfortunately, some of the graduating seniors were not able to be here tonight to come up where I was stationed or to work somewhere. One was already in school. One is... Something. Anyway, I think we have, I believe we have two here tonight. So we were very, very pleased with the response that we got from... So many since last year, we just had one. So it was encouraging to see so many young people with very good resumes. They weren't usually supposed to, as we have in the past, that do not live here or have no connections. The resumes coming in, we will number them. One, two, three, four, five. There's no names associated with them, and those are given to the judges if you will. We were real pleased with, again, with the turnout. Appreciate the young people making the effort to submit it and also maybe parents that pushed them a little bit to go ahead and send everybody's line.
That's good. Who was the first, who was the first that took the first place?
Last one.
I don't have the...
Bonnie.
Where's Bonnie at? Okay, so the first place went to Sidney Rodriguez, which is in prison right now, but she took the first place. The first place was the scholarship on the essays. So congratulations to her. Marcus, you're in, where are you at? Marcus took second place. All right, so we're going to award you with a scholarship. $3,000. Just want to say you did a wonderful job, baby. Great. So we got to see you. Good luck in your...
Matt.
Congratulations, Chica.
Thank you.
Okay, Skylar Graves was the next person. She's not here. We want to congratulate him. Hannah Lewis was the next. We want to congratulate her. Gentry?
Yeah, buddy.
Congratulations. All right, the next one was Cohen Bonner. Congratulations. And Colby Law was the last person. So congratulations to all the winners. Thank the board for their decision on the payments that were issued out.
And we're able to add a little bit more this year to our scholarship. I think it's well worth it. Apparently the board did too when it occurred, but certainly it was a good cause.
Yeah, I think this was the most that we've ever done.
Yes.
This scholarship, so we awarded it out. So that's good. So congratulations to everybody. Let's move to the next item on the agenda. We're going to go to public comments. Terry Marsh?
I'm Terry Marsh. I reside on Fort Clark, and I recently served as a member of the Rules Committee. I appreciate the service of each of you as board members. The responsibility to protect a resource that is so essential to the life and health of our community is a heavy burden. I support modifying Rule 4.04 to change the annual hunting report requirement to a monthly one with aggregate data per zone made available to the public on the website. As of today, Kenny County is in extreme drought according to the Texas Water Development Board and is included in an emergency declaration recently renewed by Governor Abbott. The city of Uvalde is in stage five of their drought plan, which features stringent use reductions and a 300% rate increase. Jim Burton recently reported that we are not seeing the expected rebound in well levels in northern Kenny County, even when we receive rainfall in the region. So that was a few months ago. I don't know where that stays now. Projections from the Edwards Aquifer Authority estimate that several consecutive years of rainfall that is multiple standard deviations above average would be required for the Edwards to fully recover. The Texas Water Development Board projects that groundwater depletion, combined with population growth, will increasingly require all Texans to help meet the state's water needs through conservation. As our district's rules are currently written, the board reviews the drought index next monthly. That is drought awareness, but it is not a drought plan. Nothing would make me happier than a nine-inch sofa rendering this question moot for the time being. But it is the responsibility of this board to plan for the worst eventuality. Even if we get a reprieve this time, a day will come when a stringent plan will have to be implemented. Personally, it is not the potential reduction in the value of my home that greets me. It is rather the alteration to the lifestyle that we thought we were choosing when we relocated here, and above all, the potential loss of a beautiful ecosystem that has nurtured humans, plants, and animals for thousands of years. Many springs that once flowed in Kenny County have already gone dry. The proverbial canary in the coal mine has in fact been a chorus of many small canaries that have already been silenced one by one. Let's not let Lossmore's, the last remaining and most significant spring in our county, join them. I support the drought plan that has been proposed to the Rules Committee. If the board does not adopt it as proposed, perhaps it can become the basis for a plan. Trigger thresholds and percentage forecasts can, for example, be adjusted. However, the current status quo cannot continue. This board must adopt a drought plan for the sake of the future of this community. Thank you, Pastor Lloyd.
Mr. Palmer?
Stand over here, I guess. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, board. David Palmer, just addressed you again this month. I just had a couple things, a little old business, a little new business to bring up with the board and give some background on. The first thing, I guess, is a comment on an item on the agenda today, item number 12. So I'd like to give you all this. Matt, I'll just give you this. Keep one for myself, I guess. Think I have enough. If not, I'll give you this one afterwards. But regarding item 12 on the agenda, which is the appointment of a representative to the planning board at Regent J. So what I've given you there is another option to consider as you go about your business to appoint someone to this important position. This position on the Plateau Water Planning Group, PWPG as it's known, represents large area of the state, you know, including obviously Kenny County. On the agenda today, it's being considered making an appointment to that important position. As you decide what to do about that, I propose basically that you might table that so all options could be considered before that's decided upon. This letter is from Maximilian Martin, longtime member of this said committee, 2017 to the present. He's Fort Clark property owner, you know, goes to church here. And his opinion, I think, should be considered, and he has recommendations for what he thinks should happen with that decision. Also on this letter, I would bring your special attention to the PWPG bylaws. Everybody's got rules. Rules are governing what we all do, and there are rules governing this vacancy of officers. So you can see them there. I'm not going to read them, but those need to be complied with. And I think maybe table in this so those can be fully reviewed and, you know, best decision can be made regarding this. So also, I have some concerns about doing it today and who has been considered. I think more people need to be considered, and I don't want to bring up those personal concerns in this public forum, but I'd be willing to bring those up. Not just my concerns, but concerns, general concerns about making that decision today. So I'd be happy anytime to express those if you give it that opportunity in a different forum. So that's that input. My second input would be old business. I didn't make copies of this. This is another graph. Everybody knows I have some notoriety about pictures with graphs, so I'm going to hand that out quickly to Matt. But that's a graph that I think we're familiar with, and it has to do with spring flow. So my comment now would be similar to one that I made in April. I made the same comment in May. I made the same request. And now I'm making it in June, and I think, given current situation, it's especially critical to consider this proposal. Lossmore Spring Flow is the DFC. I'd like to read it here. "Global net drawdown in Kenny County in 2017 is compared with 2010 October levels shall be consistent with maintenance of an average annual flow of 23.9 CFS and an annual median flow of 23.9 CFS at Lossmore Springs." I've been informed that maybe the annual median flow of 23.9, excuse me, is possibly in error, but since 2010, it's, to the best of my knowledge, been the DFC, annual average flow of 23.9 CFS in Lossmore Springs. My proposal in April was to put it on the agenda, discussion, possible action, specifically spring flow. I would like to see it discussed as it's the DFC, and I've said it before, but that's what I'd like to request again. I asked in May, and now it's June, and it's not on the agenda. So I would ask again, and either that or just be told we don't want to put it on the agenda, that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting. Discussion, possible action, spring flow, Lossmore's. It's especially important because I think you're all aware, and you can see by my chart that the data point for 2023 relative to the DFC is below the threshold. I would venture to say that Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District didn't meet the DFC for 2023. I'm aware that you're aware whether we did or not. And if you choose to elaborate on that today, that's your business. If you choose to elaborate on it later, that's your business. But I am aware that you're aware. So I'd like that, you know, you make everybody aware. The DFC is why we're all here. I'm going to get off my soapbox, but it's why the board is here. It's why Texas Water Development Board exists. It's why groundwater conservation districts exist. It's why people are paid to do all this stuff. It's why Jim's here. It's why Dr. Bill's employed. It's why all the citizens are here to figure it out. It's why the Rule Committee was made. It's, you know, it's the purpose. We need to work on that purpose. Hopefully, we can get a plan. I know there's some issues with, you know, a plan. Hopefully, there's, you know, some proposed alternatives. If, you know, the plan that has been proposed by the Rule Committee, you know, isn't what the board wants. So let's go there, but we need to get the plan moving. So we need to do some management, and I propose that that change to the agenda this meeting, please. Thank you.
Will Conlon?
Yeah, this is a copy of what was sent yesterday, just in case anybody hasn't been able to read it. This is just first printed paper. This is the drought management plan that was submitted, along with the legal opinion from Deborah Trejo, who is the expert or the general counsel for the EAA, as well as many other groundwater conservation districts. I'm not going to speak to this and let others speak to it. But for most of us here, this water conservation conversation started back in September of 2021, two and a half years ago. Back then, board members claimed Pinto Valley wasn't connected to the springs. Only rain was to blame, or mesquite trees, or pumpers in San Antonio, Fort Clark mud, or the city. Never did any board member say once then or to this day admit that pumpers here in Kenny County are connected to the spring. Even though the board had a spring sensitivity map showing which wells were most connected to the spring, and it showed 90% of the permities in the county to be moderately or highly connected to the springs. That map was submitted by Dr. Hutchinson to the board in September of 2021, two and a half years ago. Even though every hydrologist said Pinto Valley, where most of the irrigators are, is connected to the springs, even when the board's own hydrologist, Bill Hutchinson, said Pinto Valley is probably connected to the spring, still, to this day, I've only heard one board member admit irrigation wells are connected to the spring. You've had the evidence for a long time, and I've chosen not to act. We still have no regulation of pumping or a drought management plan to protect the spring after two and a half years. Over the last three years, we have had 80%, 85%, and last year, we had 90% of our average rainfall, according to the Texas Water Development Board. We need to stop blaming rain. Over the last three years, our spring flow has been 35%, 30%, and 14% of its average flow, according to the USGS meter. Pumping has been 175%, 250%, and 280% of its average over the last three years, according to this water development, water conservation district. It is insulting to the intelligence of this community for you to continue to blame rain and claim pumping is not impacting the springs. After two and a half years, there is no more excuse for delay. You have a plan. No other plan has been submitted by the pumping community or this board. I'd ask you to please vote on this plan tonight. Additionally, given the email traffic that took place yesterday from some board members asking what law supports the board having an obligation to protect the private property of non-permittees from damage caused by the permitting actions of this board, I'd ask for the board to clarify that it does believe it has a legal obligation to non-permittees and not only the 32 permities to protect the private property of non-permittees from damage caused by the permitting actions of this board.
Richard Gonzalez?
Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes. I won't repeat everything that's already been said, so I'm going to try to keep it as short as I possibly might. My name is Richard Gonzalez. I'm a voter at precinct two. And I've been to these meetings here now for a while. Obviously, we all have a concern. And in the process, you know, because we live here in town, we do the store, visit each other. There's been a common thread in the people that I've talked to. These are all, not all voters, but a lot of them are, is apathy. Someone has said, yeah, they've come to the board meetings before, and when these situations have occurred, and nothing would be done, and nothing would be done now. This is what they told us. Well, our numbers have grown here. But the same thing is that we have a sheriff here. If the sheriff was not doing his job, all the same people would be at his office, telling him to pour. Essentially telling him to do his job. He's got to do his job. That's all we're asking you to do, is do your job. So, and the voters here are essentially doing the same thing, is they see the drought. They see the water being pumped, and nothing, nothing is being done. Something has to be done. Has to be done. So we ask you to vote, or at least put it on the agenda so you will vote, so we all can see that you're actually doing your job. That's all we ask that you do your job. Don't do anything crazy here. So thank you very much.
David Conlon?
This concern is also the proposed plan by the Rules Committee. First of all, I wrote the letter and referred it to you. During the Rules Committee process, the conservation-minded members repaired and proposed a critical period management plan for adoption by the board to protect Lossmore Springs and the creek in the offshore. Charlie Gaines and other members of the water pumping side of the Rules Committee have asserted the proposed plan is against the law.
David, would you speak up a little bit, please?
Charlie Gaines and other members of the water pumping side of the Rules Committee have asserted the proposed plan is against the law. The conservation-minded Rules Committee members requested and received a legal opinion letter from Deborah Trejo dated May 6, 2024, as to the legal durability of the proposed plan. Deborah Trejo is one of the state's leading water attorneys, representing six Texas groundwater districts, including May's Trinity, Southern Trinity, and Edwards Aquifer Authority. According to the attorney's opinion letter, the proposed plan for Lossmore Springs represents a reasonable legal approach to address the district's obligation to protect groundwater resources in the district. Cites Water Code. The proposed plan is consistent with the approach taken by other districts working to conserve and protect their groundwater resources, especially in light of drought and climate change models. The district should consider adoption of the proposed plan and incorporation of its requirements into its rules. The district should also require that permit holders adopt and implement conservation plans. With over 20 years of no action by the board to adopt a critical period management plan with the existing drought and drying out of Lossmore Springs and Lossmore Creek, I respectfully request prompt action for the plan to be implemented. We're running out of time. Given the outspoken statements from Humperside board members that the critical period management plan is against the law, I also request the board to obtain, without further delay, a legal opinion from the board's legal counsel concerning the legal durability of the proposed critical period management plan. Thank you.
DeeDee Brown?
Hello, everybody. Mine's going to be really short. I'm DeeDee Brown. I'm a voter in precinct one. This groundwater district was created in 2001. Everybody knows that we live in a historically drought-ridden place. We've had 23 years to adopt a drought contingency plan. At this point, it seems blatantly irresponsible to not do so. We need to act now. We need to pass something. We need to vote on the plan that was submitted, and if it's not acceptable, change it, revise it, but move on it. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, item number six. Discussion, possible action, approval of minutes of the May review meeting, special board meeting. I have a motion to approve on the table. I have a second. I've got a second. Any discussion on the item? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Item number eight, which is review the month Item number eight, which is review the monthly investment.
Seven.
Okay, seven. Discussion on possible action on the financial stake in the twenty twenty-four.
Total income is fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents to the monthly. Year-to-date, six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Total expenses for the month, forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents. And for the year, three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
We have a motion.
Quick question, what does office expense?
I can look back real quick and get back with you. We had a big item for this one, but I'll let me check it.
Are there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. I have a second. Any more discussion on the item? All who are in favor? Motion carries. Anybody got a push?
We have a push on that.
Just wait. Let's move on to the next item, which is discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid.
If I go back to Mr. Gaines' question. Okay, number one, the office expense study includes payroll. Since we have twenty-six pay periods, this happens every month, and we have three pay periods. And then another part of it was, I signed up for the tag meeting. It comes up in.
Office payroll is listed under staff, not office expense.
That's true. I was just looking at the number of several sheets.
If you look at the list of things paid, the other, the other's only nine dollars called office expense. Instead of nine dollars.
Let me look in here.
Personnel's under staff, I lost.
All right, on the current item that we've got, which is the voices received and voices paid. Are there any questions? All right, well, someone entertain a motion.
And is it being approved as?
Do you have a motion, or a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Any further discussion on the item? All who are in favor? Motion carries. To the next item on the agenda, which is review the Texas Water and Phil, Water and Phil Index. Hold the monitoring site. Jim, do you have anything special that we need to know anything about?
No, sir.
May I ask a question regarding the item? Last month, I believe the index of the water report wasn't given because of Mr. Jim was sick. Is that information available now, and if so, what would it look like?
It's included in this, and it'll be posted on there.
Since you're here now, would you, would you speak to it?
Hang on, Gage.
This will be posted on the internet in the morning, Gage. Or on their website.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You want any questions? What's the depth of the mud well right now?
Thirty-five feet. And in there for three days.
So, when does he start? We're already in, four parks in stage one.
Stage one, uh-huh.
When do they go in stage two?
Are they all, according to the, I'm reading it, because Jason brought this up.
It says that for a ten-day moving average.
For ten-day living average, uh-huh. So they'll determine that. They, and based on what I'm seeing here, it looks like it's been about three days on this report, as I'm reading the report. I think Jason has a different.
My ten-day moving average is thirty-seven point four. So, according to my calculations, it'll be tomorrow that it would be, but.
For ten days, ten consecutive days, how many days?
The average of ten days. So some of the days are below thirty-five feet, and some are above thirty-five feet, but the average of the last ten days is thirty-seven point four feet.
Anyway, it's at thirty-five. And what Randy Tommy was that, practically was at fifty.
So, just for everybody's information, the fourth goes into stages before the city does. So, the city, the city will start stage one.
At fifty feet.
Right now is when they're going to start stage one. That has to do with the elevation or something.
Right, it's a difference.
I wanted to mention that, I guess the last time Jim was here, he gave a presentation, and we noticed a drastic spike and downfall in the spring flow. And everybody was kind of wondering what had happened with that. Come to find out that another well is now in use by the Ford that's pulling that down, if I have the Ford correctly. And so, that was the big spike that we saw right around April first.
Is that another? I know there's two wells.
Which one is it, Jim?
Number two.
Any other discussion on the items? We all need to work on a little more time on the. I don't have any other questions or anything else on this. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion on possible action agreement for legislative representation. Jim, tell us a little bit about this.
Argument stated there is a vacancy for Region J. It's where GMA represented. I currently have three representatives, I'm sorry.
The, um, you're on, you're on twelve, we're still on eleven. There's nothing on the books on eleven.
This is from her attorney, Mr. Ellis. Came in this afternoon. The Senate and the House both. Submitted the authorities. And the head of the legislature, the legislature committee in session, and the board member who is presenting the bill. There's one more, I think for the House, there's one more issue that may come up. For the Senate, there's several. I haven't gone through them yet. But it's probably a number of districts have this, and it's probably a good idea to have. While Mr. Ellis represents us as the individual board, we have this coming session, we might also need a contractor, if you will, lobbyist to represent us. Just if there's something that comes up during the session, some water issue that would come up, that we would need him to intervene in our behalf. He's a lobbyist for a number of groundwater districts. We've had, but certainly there's others throughout the state. I would want to go with this. I prefer to stay with him simply because he's more familiar with our district than some of the others might would be. He can speak on everything, I don't know, and our district operates and so forth. So if you want to have a chance to read this over, table an action, maybe need to take it next time, or that's entirely up to you. It would run from, from the time it's approved. It would run through September of two thousand twenty-five.
So sixty thousand to get us to there in half.
Yes, yes.
Why have we not had one? Is there no, why is there a need now when we haven't had one before?
Well, there haven't been issues picked or that. Apparently, he feels that there's some, maybe some serious issues coming up this next session because he has his ear to the ground in Austin before. Of his position. And we've not had one in the past. I think one other time we considered it. Decided not to, decided not to go with. But it's not something that we would have every other year when the legislature's in session. I know there are groundwater districts that have a representative, a legislative representative, that they have from year to year, the year, or every other year. It's to protect their interest, if you will.
Back here, we couldn't hear who you're talking about. You were kind of talking down, and then you had a name?
Greg Ellis, my current lawyer.
Greg Ellis.
Greg Ellis.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Sorry, there's, there's others.
See, I did, that there's something special that would affect us coming up, or is this, I mean, water? I mean, several years ago, Colly Shaheen and I went to Austin. There were some water bills proposed that would adversely affect Kenny County. We went up there and walked the halls and, and that's a lobby to me on behalf of the county. It's, we didn't have a paid lobbyist then. Much interest as there is, if there's something, there are several sources where we can get this information.
Yeah, you can go in, yeah, anybody can go in and visit with different ones, but if you're going to actually lobby, you've got to be a registered lobbyist, and you pay to be a registered lobbyist.
Oftentimes, it has more effect if it's someone that's taking the time to go up there, not getting paid to do it. There are, there are terrible outfits that, that watch water legislation closely. I mean, Texas Cattle Racers, Texas Wildlife Association, Texas Land and Mineral Owners Association. They, they all have lobbyists. In the past, what we've done, with what my wife and I did, we leaned on one of the lobbyists for TLMA, you know, to tell us personally what was going on, so that we could get out in front of it. And it seemed like we ought to explore, you know, maybe a liaison with some of these, or let me at least call that lobbyist with whom we've had a twenty-five-year relationship, to check into alternatives before we spend district money like this. I think, I think there are different ways to approach this to achieve the same goal.
Thanks for obviously encouraging.
I'm not opposed to that, I just think we ought to have a little more information that, before we spend this kind of money for this.
I'm just title it for next, twice the government agenda for next time. I make a motion to table it, too.
One second.
With that being said, we're going to talk to Greg next, let him know that we want to talk to him. At least at the next meeting, we discuss the matter, we'll be further to find out what's going on. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion on the item? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Before we're going to go into item thirteen.
Twelve.
On twelve. Discussion on possible action on the appointment of Marty Payne as a power of Conservation District Representative for Region J. What does that detail, Jim?
Sorry.
What does that detail?
Okay, it's just a. I think it's just a. Started out a while ago. We currently have three members that are serving on Region J. Kelly Shaheen represents Environmental, West Robinson Agriculture. Previously, it was for Nager, now was the GMA representative. I also serve on there, but I'm the liaison between GMA ten and Region J. All of the voting members serve in that group that are not, that are not voting members. I like to support that we keep four members in the group from Kenny County to give representation for us. And I did recommend Marty for this position. Obviously, he hasn't, hasn't been here that long, but I think she would, I think it would help her to learn a lot and help the district too. She's doing the things that come up at Region J. And if I, I have already talked to the secretary for Region J, explaining this is going to be coming up for, you know, a vote around this time. So I don't know if I heard where the decision is. So, and they're expecting the next Region J meetings in August.
I'm making a motion, we have Marty, Marty Penny. Do you have that a motion? We approve Marty, a second. I'd say get comments on this before we go.
A second.
Item six, is there any discussion on the item? Is that a call for other comment?
No.
No, you have to accept other comment, period. What was that deal that, we just, what was the deal that Greg was talking about?
Members are allowed to comment at the beginning, it's an open discussion.
Members are allowed to comment at the beginning, there's been an open discussion. As far as the board, I have something on to, I can get a copy of it. Can bring it, now I think it's been read once before, but I'll get a copy and read it again. Okay, in the last legislative session, um, there was some action taken that districts needed to add something to their rules pertaining to procedure, conduct, decorum at meetings of the board of directors. Of course, it says all regular, special, and emergency board meetings should be called in accordance with the provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act. And it goes on, public participation in board meetings is limited to that of observers unless the board requests that a member of the public address the board, unless the person who wishes to address the board submits a completed public participation form prior, prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public participation form must list each agenda item a person wishes to address, or any item that the board, that the person would like the board to consider adding in a future agenda. Public comment will occur only at the beginning of the meeting, prior to consideration of any other agenda items. And this is a part of our rules that were adopted in November of twenty thirty.
That's all it says. All right. Well, I've got a motion and I've got a second. I want to state for the record, you're, you're saying that you have an objection to that, right? I'm going to put it on record that you have an objection to that. And also, Mr. Palmer.
I also have an objection.
Okay, that's fine, Janelle. That's fine.
I think just to be clear, I think that the objection is that you are going outside of the rules, negating this, on not accepting your public comment. I think that that rule does support that there's a public comment bar for, for any actions taken. I did put that I wanted to speak to all these items. We had this same issue arise during the November meeting. And Greg Ellis said, if there's a vote taken against an item, you have to allow comments on that at that time.
Is it listed on the square?
Matt, if I could too, could I just, when I made my initial comment as per the rules, as far as I know regarding number twelve, in the beginning, part of my comment was, I would like the opportunity to speak to the board regarding this issue in private. There's some things I think that are of concern to all the board before they vote on this, that I would be more than willing to share with them, and I don't feel comfortable in, you know, and this is not the right venue to do that. So I would request the venue to do that, you know, if the board so goes. Ellis, and do you have a key or?
I want to say something. If this letter is not addressing Max Million to become, to fill the position, it's addressed to nominee Darlene Shahean. To fill the position. And that wasn't mentioned.
And her husband's on it.
And her husband's on it.
I'm going to go ahead and let you, uh, talk, Will. So, go ahead and say what you need to say.
Okay, I want to, I want to read a quick post, a paraphrase a little bit here, since it's made on, on Facebook. For those friends who are attending the Water Board Meeting in Racket this coming week, keep in mind, Los Morex Springs Conservation Association is only interested in their own ideas and no one else's. They don't care about the science. Uh, some person who has an opinion, uh, or they don't care about anybody that have opinion of mine of their own. Uh, tried to stay out of this water fight, but not anymore. Uh, there's just, this is just a bunch of saber rattling. Uh, the water is not connected to the spring, the pumping, Edge of Valley is not connected to the springs. These folks do not have the best interest of Kenny County or Rockville in mind. I know where I stand, this isn't with the ideas of Ellen SCA. And people who, various people liked this post, most of them, the pumping community. Among them, Martia Payne, who you're nominating to represent this board and Region J. I'd also like to read what Region J currently says is the available water for Kenny County. Let me read the other counties first, other regions. Banderas County, nine thousand, Edwards, seven, Kerr, seventeen, Real, eleven, Albury, fifty. And Kenny County, eighty thousand, as currently what is the draft proposal for the new and updated available groundwater that's being reported in Region J, Region J. This is what they use to approve plans this board submits on whether or not they should regulate. This is an important role, and you have a bunch of non-conservation people representing us. Wes Robinson is on that board, he is outspoken, one of the most extreme supporters of it. We need someone who we feel likes barely representing the interests of conservation up there. That's, that's all I have to say.
So, I've got a motion to approve, and I have a second. Is there any other discussion on the item? Make a vote? Do you hear your name? All right, you can resend it. So you all, you all are going to make a vote, you're going to make a stand here, what do you want to do?
I want to watch Marty Payne.
My vote, so I've got, I've got the first and I've got the second.
And I agree.
Okay, so, you all vote. Do you hear your name? Yes?
Oh, yes.
Just get, oh, I want a, I want a hand, so.
I mean, go around the table and wear it.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Now, the motion passes.
But it's ultimately, it's up to Region, we recommend whatever, it's up to Region Teddy to make the decision.
Now we're going to move to item number thirteen. Which I'm going to postpone it, we're going to go into recess, executive session first. Discuss personnel and financial litigation matters.
Matt, I can't hear you, are you not going to do item thirteen, I'm just saying?
We're going to item fourteen before I go into thirteen. So, uh, I'm going to go into executive session first before I come back out to item thirteen. Okay, the meeting is back in session, it's now eight thirteen P M. Item number fifteen, which is discussion of possible action matters deliberated during closed session. No action has been taken over any of the discussion that we had in closed session. So now we're going to move back up to item number thirteen, which is discussion of possible action on drought management plan and other rule changes. Mr. Gaines, would you tell us a little bit about what's going on with the committee?
Hi. Not met some of y'all, I'm Charlie Gaines, uh, was on the Rules Committee. It's been interesting, to say the least. I said when we started this rules thing, if, if I wind up, um, you know, if, if everybody's mad at me, I mean, for, for, for lack of a better discussion, just call it the, the, you know, conservation side or the irrigating side, if everybody's mad at me, I will have done my job, apparently I've succeeded. You know, a couple of months ago, um, you know, we've received nasty emails and, you know, cursing and, you know, whatnot, you know, telling me that I was, um, you know, on the conservation side, and lately I've been cursed because I'm on the, you know, the, the irrigating side, so, um, like I said, I, all along, I've tried to stay in the middle on this thing. Um, within the guidelines, within the law, um, um, you know, everybody here wants the spring flow, everybody here wants, you know, wants food on their table that the farmers provide. I'm going to start this off with, with the, um, the relatively non-controversial rules changes that have been, um, they came from Dr. Bill primarily. The first one, he wanted a recognition that the, that the mag, the model available groundwater is not consistent. It's not reliable. And, you know, it's, it's one permitting factor, but he wanted it in the rules that it's, it's currently constituted, it's not reliable. That's being worked on again for this five-year cycle thing. You know, you know, the, the, you know, the committee, um, you know, was, was largely in favor of this. I would ask for a motion in the second to, you know, to forward that recommendation to Greg so that he can put it in the, in the proper legal language, which will be discussed, you know, before it's adopted at a subsequent board meeting. When I have a.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right. Second rule change had to do with, uh, streamlining the, um, the permitting process. You know, Dr. Bill had recommended that something under a hundred acre feet a year. You know, he wanted one to do away with testing, um, that he would replace it with, uh, something, something about impact on spring flow. The committee said the hundred acre feet was, was a little high, they wanted to lower it to fifty. Uh, one of our members pointed out in, in, um, other counties that, uh, you know, entities, um, you know, had, you know, a, a common entity had applied for multiple fifty acre feet to try to get around the, um, uh, the restrictions. You know, so the committee wanted to, um, the fifty acre foot limit, even if they're combined permits. There's no stacking of permits by either applicants or by, uh, by acreage. Again, I would like a, a motion to, um, eliminate the testing period, to streamline the process, you know, you know, fifty acre feet is the limit. And also Greg can add a language about the stacking of permits. I have a motion in second. Again, this is a Dr. Bill recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Third recommendation from Dr. Bill, um, was to, um, have, you know, monthly, um, reporting. And then also, uh, have, um, the new, you know, I think they call it new field check, maybe we hadn't hired Marty at the time, but, you know, to, you know, to check, audit, whatever, um, um, you know, once a month on the, the, the larger wells, you know, every other month on, on smaller ones, and then the smallest just, uh, once a year. Also wanted, uh, this, you know, posted monthly to the website. Anyway, you know, again, Greg can come up with the, the language, but the, the motion would be monthly reporting, post the website, and, and audited, um, you know, by, by Marty. You know, again, dependent on size. I need a motion in the second. This is Dr. Bill's recommendation again.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Quick question to Charlie on what the impact is?
I can't hear you.
The, just to clarify, the impact of these votes doesn't actually make the rule, these are votes to get Greg to put the rules together. Then we'll vote on the fine print of those rules later.
Right. You know, he and Dr. Bill will flesh out the details, you know, what we're providing them is, is kind of the general sense of, of what we want. I mean, the monthly reporting and, and posting.
Thank you.
You got it? Those are the easy ones. Drought management plan. It has been, it's been requested that, um, you know, the, what's labeled proposal for Kenny County Groundwater Conservation District Critical Management Plan is submitted by some members of the committee. It'll be brought to a vote. I'll look for a motion in the second to adopt that plan. Hearing none, um, the plan will not come to the vote. There's been concern expressed by the public, um, that, that, you know, the board doesn't care about drought management, something, uh, something along those lines. You know, uh, I would like a show of hand from the board members, um, as to, you know, if the board will work on a drought management plan, I want a show of hand from the board, that everybody that is in support of that or not supports, that those in favor of the, the drought management plan. I'd let the record show that the entire board, the entire board is in favor of coming up with some sort of drought management plan.
Aye.
Aye, along, uh, along those lines, um, in, in discussion with, with, uh, with our attorney. There are other proposals that were made, um, uh, about the drought management, you know, they were made to me by some members. They didn't want to, uh, I guess, you know, put things out in the public. There's a lot of emotion, I guess maybe they, you know, didn't want to be a target for one side or the other, anyway. There are a number of aspects to this, but the board will form a three-person committee and, and, and start coming up with, with the drought management plan. Along those lines, one of our rules, uh, existing rules, and I think it's eight point oh one, uh, talking about using the best science, um, to come up with zones. Uh, along those lines, I owe the board and the public an apology. You know, I misunderstood one thing, uh, Dr. Bill had a, has a geologist that is working on the, well, the geology, the, the zones and whatnot. I was told that work would be completed in May. I had now found out that the work was completed. But the next step is Bill has to fold it into, he's updating a model. I think he said something about this new, new model is going to be multi-level, uh, whether it's deep water surface, you know. He called it multi-level, and, uh, he has sent a letter to the, to the board indicating that, that that model, um, you know, that the estimated completion is the end of the year. And according to our rule eight oh one, you know, in terms of best science for, you know, what affects the spring, what doesn't, you know, what, um, you know, what, what, uh, permitted wells are within, you know, again, what we currently have is a zone one, two, three. That is what this new model will come up with. So, in the meantime, the, the, the three-person committee is going to work, you know, try to work on, on a drought plan taking, you know, you know, you know, just because the proposed plan was, um, you know, was not passed this evening, does not mean that they're not good id- ideas, and it ideas that will hopefully be incorporated into, you know, whatever drought plan the board come, the, the, the three-person committee comes up with to present to the board so the board can have open discussion, uh, with the public in, in terms of adopting a plan. That's where, that's where it stands, um.
Charlie, Phil, Phil's been talking about, I've been this, I've been this small more for two and a half years, you think it's perfect to wait six more months?
Yeah.
I think we're bound by our rule eight oh one about best science.
We have the best available science available to us now, it's the best that's available to us now. We have three zones that are backed up by science from the district geologists, Phil, as you said. That's what we can use now, and we can update them as they become updated, which is going to be a process that lasts till the end of time.
I know there's a lot of disappointment in this, but this, this is where it stands now, and this, this committee will do this.
When can we expect a plan to be developed?
This, this is not, this is not an argument, I mean, really, this is what we're going to do.
I just want to ask, when can we expect a plan to be developed? And implemented?
Again, yeah, um, I would think that, you know, the committee can start coming up with different points, um, you know. We haven't met yet, I don't know.
So, the first rule committee that was supposed to come up with a drought plan, they came up with one, now we're assigning another committee to do the exact same thing.
It's not, it's not that thing.
Can you tell me what didn't work?
Everyone's expecting it to just be drumming out the process, and we would like to know when we can expect a plan to be implemented. That's why we're all here, and we have been showing up for two years.
Yeah. That, no, um, she's asked a question, she's, she's asked a question, let me, let me get the, um, I would anticipate having a plan by the end of the year, okay? Hopefully sooner, Bill finishes his stuff sooner, um, you know, may, maybe something along those lines. The fact that it, there hasn't been a plan, you can tell me I've been two and a half years, hell, it's been twenty-three years.
Yeah.
Two and a half years since you received.
So, this, this board is moving, it's, you know, you know, along as, as quickly as we can, given the limitations of, you know, our, our current rules and current, and, and law.
It would be three years since you received management of those, at the end of this year.
Well, I wouldn't hear three years, Phil, I'm, I'm not going to address that, I mean, this, this is what it's going to be. I'm here to inform, I'm not here to argue. Yeah.
Charlie, on what basis did you not forward it, like, you guys all voted not even to make a motion, to even forward it to the lawyer's court, to Dr. Bill, how can you vote to not even forward it to the lawyer or Dr. Bill, you voted to not. We, 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 we.
Stop right there.
How did that happen?
Oh, oh.
There won't be no other interruptions from?
It's not interruption, it's just a question.
If you, if, if, if there's any more talk, then I'll have you ejected from this meeting.
We, we did.
That, Charlie.
No, no.
Stop it, just stop. So, we're waiting for the science to catch up with what we're fixing to do, there's no reason to jump the gun.
Not the spring being dried, or the dirt somewhere else?
So, we're going to make the decision, that we're going to put together a plan based around the geologist, and based around our, uh, attorney. We're not rushing into anything.
No.
Why would, why would you want to rush into something that you have no results from?
Because the water's running out.
That's happening everywhere, gee.
You can do something about it.
Yes.
It's over with, so, we're going to move forward. This board is going to form a committee and is going to deal specifically with the management plan. And it's going to be put forward, then we're going to work together with those people, that's it. Now, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Matt, can you recognize somebody?
No.
No. You cannot recognize me to ask the question, in a, in a polite way.
This is a democracy.
Let, let, let me. To answer your question, we, we ran it by the attorney in, in the closed session, and there is no provision for, for questions or public comments, other than at the beginning of these meetings, and so, there'll be no discussion now.
I do.
I, to, to answer your question, when we formed this committee, I told the committee from the get-go that if we could come up with some sort of compromise, I mean, work together, you know, if we have a, a problem, we all want a solution, the committee did not do that, the committee, in essence, polarized.
What happened was that?
No, you're, you're, you're out of line, you're out of, you're, you're out of line, you're out of line.
I just want to say one thing.
You're out of line, you're out of line, no, you cannot, you cannot.
What happened was?
You're out of line.
Okay, I'm out of line, I'll, I'll leave you, but I want to say one thing.
Then we're, move on.
These people had the courage to give out their plan in public to everyone, and then after I spent all my time sitting on this committee, I sat on there, nothing happened, and then there's all these other secret plans, can we get a copy of those and check that out? That's proprietary information, no, I felt, my time on that committee was a waste of my time.
It was a waste because there was no spirit of compromise.
Because there was no feedback from anyone except from Los Morris.
That's not.
Everybody else has sat there, and then they threw out plans to you after the fact that no one else can read, that's all, bye.
I, I also sat through every meeting, and that's a mischaracterization, but anyway, we're done, move on.
I'm done too, we'll see you guys in another venue.
Go ahead. We're not making any entertaining motions for all of them.
That was a stipulation for the beginning.
This gentleman, you go for it.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on the, the three people on this today?
No.
Okay.
Since the last board meeting, we've only had, uh, one application for exempt well submitted, uh, since the vote, of the Kemp Woodrow. Uh, since the first year, we've only had four applications for exempt well. The meeting, the tax firm meeting was last week, uh, the legislative committee meeting will be soon, week before last, just in the end. Rachel Jay will be meeting next in August, uh, June eighteen, her next meeting will be in July, June the seventh, there's not been a date set for the next meeting. Uh, I had notification from our, uh, insurance company, all of the insurance, this category, text me this, believe, which is, which is government exempt. It seems their insurance is maybe going to go up like, around two point nine percent. Workers' comp and Director Austin and I, two, they're going to remain static, they're not going up, uh, insurance. Vehicle insurance was, was going up considerably. We'll just have to wait and see, it should be in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a, a figure on that, but it will be, we know at least two percent, two point nine percent, three percent, uh, more than had been previous year. As I mentioned something previously about the House and Senate federal charges, I've got copies of those, if anybody's interested in looking for them, they're, they're pretty thick, but, as long as they float along, I'll keep you abreast of that. The next thing in, the last thing. At the last legislative session, Senate Bill eighteen ninety-three relating to the prohibition of certain social media applications and services on devices owned or leased by federal entities, it was one of the bills that was passed. Uh, the bill requiring the Department of Information Resources draft a model policy, which I have a copy of, and, uh, then we will need to adopt this, and either adopt it by resolution and it will become, become part of our, uh, part of the rules. Like, we don't have any of these on any of our computers here, but, uh, prohibited software application developers, TikTok, Casper C, Purperty, ByteDance Limited, Tenseen Holdings, Alloca, Cam Scanner, QQ Wallet, Shorkit, carry it, V-May, WeChat, uh, WeChat Pay and WPS Office, or any subsidiaries of those. We have none of those on our computers. As far as the prohibited software equipment manufacturers, most of them I can't even pronounce the name of, so, uh, but we don't, don't have any, you know, we don't have any of that on our computers, and we will, um, but next month, I'll have this on the agenda for next month to go ahead and, and adopt this. A plan, plan for us, or whatever, it will be this exact thing, but it will be, you know, excerpts from this, the, the, kind of a, kind of a model, a model security plan for prohibited technologies, so, we'll have that on the agenda for next month. That's all, I have to answer your question about the.
Office expense.
About office expense, okay, I cannot provide a light on that quite, why it was, why it was so, you know, so much. A big portion of it was to NetPro, remember me telling you, y'all several times, that we had not gotten the bill for our, uh, iPads and the, the, uh, two servers that we had ordered last year, but we, we finally got a bill on those, and, and, and so, nine thousand, that was that, so, that's what you previously approved before, you know, I just couldn't think right offhand what that was.
That's.
And that's all I have.
Okay, with item number sixteen, which was the discussion, you have various future agenda items to come up with. Try calling Dr. Bill and see how soon we can start this, uh, process. We want to do everything with a, with a, with a plan. So, as soon as we start on it, that is going to be. Anything else to tell me? I want to see on the agenda. I want to go ahead and tell you the items with the break. Sorry, I didn't hear during the course, how many permitted well applications were there this year? Permitted well applications?
Now, I, I was recording on exempt well applications, but this one, exempt would be domestic livestock household. We had one application this past month.
For permitted? For permitted well?
No, sir, exempt well.
Did you report on the?
Exempt well is one that is domestic and livestock.
Do you report on permitted wells? Zero.
I'm not following you.
There's no permitted well.
There's no application well.
None for this year, none, no permitted well applications?
Last month.
For this year? For this month? We have had no permitted well applications this year.
He talked about the whole year, but you were talking about last month, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about from the last, from the last board meeting.
She was talking about last month, one month.
And that's all I was reporting on.
Said there's no permitted for a year.
That, that's all I was reporting on.
Okay, so we're not, you're going to say how many have been filed? If you need it, just put it in writing and it'll be back to you. Is there any other discussion or anything? I entertain the motion out of the first and the second, please, John. Any further discussion? Vote? Motion carried. Thirty-nine.